Did everyone get an agenda? There's plenty of agendas going around. Everybody has an agenda. Okay, we're all ready. Council, you ready to get started? Stay go, and we'll start. I'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. December the 11th, 2012. Five o'clock meeting. And I've got an announcement I'd like to make. Today, we're going to... This city council meeting tonight is going to be broadcast live on YouTube. Broadcast live on YouTube. The YouTube channel... Let me give you the YouTube channel. It's youtube.com/FAE. Let me give that to you again. And I want to thank Van and Scott Gravely. Not only will our regular meeting be filmed, but also our council work session. And this is going to allow any of our citizens to view the city council meetings live. And you can go watch it anytime you like. All you have to do is go to the YouTube channel. Did I get that right, the channel? And I want to thank Scott and Van for doing that for us. And this will be the first time we've had a work session that will be streamed over the internet. But now, you can go watch this whenever you want to watch it. It's going live now. It's going out live right now. And I'm sorry. My friend Ron Davis is just calling me here. I'm going to put him on hold. Thank you for your attendance. We want to encourage all of our citizens to participate in our city government. And we covet your input into all the activities. And let me tell you, there's a lot of activity going on in Fayette County. And I'm glad that there is. So, a lot of things we can do to improve our community. And I want to thank this council and thank our citizens for your support of city government. We're going to begin our meeting... Well, I've got one other announcement. I'd like to congratulate Ann Ullman. She has been elevated to a new position at Beale State Community College. She's gone from a 10-month employee to a 12-month employee. And the name of the position again...
Upper Bound Math and Science Project Director.
Project Director. Okay. Congratulations. Ann does an outstanding job as our art museum part-time director. So, thank you for the good job you do with our art museum. Okay, council, you have the agenda. Before we begin, we want to open our meaningful prayer. Councilman Cowell, would you leave us some prayers?
Sure. Thank you. Dory, thank you for letting us come together as a free people, a free nation, and discuss ideas the way we see fit and not being given to us from some omnipotent ruler. We can manage ourselves in our own government. With the mayor, with the council, with the employees of the city, with everybody in Fayette, in Fayette County during this Christmas season. And we hope everyone, I pray for everyone to have a blessed season and New Year in your name. Pray amen.
Amen.
Let's have a pledge of flag. Councilor Dory, would you please just pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to call a meeting to order and let our record show that we have all of our council present with the exception of Councilman Gray. He had a conflict, and he could not be here tonight. We do have a forum to conduct city business, and we do have a lot of special guests out here. And they're going to be recognized here in a few minutes. Thank you for being here, council. You have the minutes. And I want to apologize. I've been in and out of the doctor's office here for the last two days. And I did not get you your packets when you needed them. I apologize to you for that. But you have the minutes. If you had time to review the minutes, do I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second motion?
Second.
Second, Councilman Cowell. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? This is November the 27th, regular meeting, and then December the 4th, special meeting. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor of adopting our minutes, say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. All right, let's get right into our business session. Our fire department report. Let me ask our fire chief, Chief Ellis, to come forward. He should have that report, council.
Okay, for the month of November, we answered four fire calls. We had five rescue calls, two hazardous condition calls, three service calls, and we had eight false calls. Brought us to a total of 22 for the month of November and 237 calls for the year through November.
All right, council, you have any comments about the chief? Chief, just notice some of the false calls were said malicious calls. Those are right calls?
Those numbers outside there, it could have been the circumstance surrounding it. You know, I would have to say, I don't know if we've had any really malicious calls. Or not malicious, but intentional in my mind.
Yeah, that's what I was...
But we may have classified it as that with that number. I don't know if we had four intentional calls.
Okay, chief, any other comments you want to make? Very good. Thanks, sir. We're going to have our assistant chief to come forward now. And Chief John Underwood. Our police chief is at his daughter's nursing graduation. So, he had a conflict. We excused him to attend that nursing graduation ceremony.
Okay. This is our police report for November. We investigated eight wrecks. Incident reports was 26. Municipal court cases was 71. District court cases was 14. Total cases was 85.
Okay, council. You heard the report. Any questions that you want to ask Assistant Chief Underwood?
Chief, just wrecks, that's an awful low amount. Do we just have a good month? Or do we count parking lot wrecks in this anymore? I know we used to count those as a wreck working on a 10-page report. Do you still do that? Or you put it away?
Still count it as a wreck. It's just been a load this month, not close to more.
Okay, so parking lot wrecks still count?
Yes, sir.
I tell you what, as you know, that's the most likely place you're going to have a wreck in Fayette County, on the law mart or St. Dollar General or Chevron parking lot, especially. Chevron. And you're not going to get killed, but you're certainly going to bang up some things. You ready? Any other comments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank Mark Brown for his donation to the police department, Charles Cafeteria for catering out safely. And Fred's Buy Hats For Heroes.
Hats for what?
Heroes.
Heroes.
It's a fund that they do every year for police and fire department.
Okay. Very good.
And wish everyone a Merry Christmas and please, everyone be safe.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate that. Item number three, our city audit. Ricky Cave placed a copy for the audit. I'm going to ask Mr. Cave to come forward and share his report with us.
Do I have a copy?
Or yours?
And Senator's got the timer on me, I see. For the sake of everyone here, I thought we'd go through each one of these 50 pages of the financial statements in detail. Everybody do have a copy? Okay, I promise I've been breaking. It's okay with you guys. I realize y'all just got this report today, or maybe even just a few minutes ago. So, you obviously have not had time to go through this in any kind of detail. So, what I thought I would do is kind of hit the highlights for you tonight. Point out a few things. You have the significant numbers, a few other things. Of course, take this home, study it. And if you have any questions, please call me. Come by the office. I'd be glad to address them. Look up any additional information for you. Kind of dress in a work session or one-on-one meeting, however you want. Just take it home, study it. Have any questions, please let me know, and I'll be glad to address that for you. In addition to the blue bond, we're also giving you just a few minutes ago, two separate reports. One is a one-page summary of the financial statement. This, as I was just saying, this thing is about 50 pages long. It's very confusing. Very confusing. So, this is a one-page summary, just to hit the very basic highlights for you. And this is basically why I was on cover tonight, this kind of stuff. But that's for you. Then also, you have a management report. The management report is basically areas of recommendations for improvements, internal control weaknesses, and so forth. These items are considered not to be significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. Those kind of things we have to put in our audit report. Okay? This management report is less significant items, nevertheless, things we need to discuss. And most of these things we've talked about to some degree. There is one item on here that I want to bring to your attention that it's really a problem occurred, but we haven't corrected it. But I want to bring to y'all's attention. But to hit the numbers very, very briefly, if you look up on page four of the report, this report is called the... This starts on page four, is the Management Discussion and Analysis. It's called an M-DNA report. I'm first to admit, this 50 pages is boring reading. Okay, very confusing. This Management Discussion Analysis is supposed to be an overview of the financial statements. Supposed to be a summary. Now, I realize it's a 10-page summary. Okay, we don't do things simple. Our summary reports are very detailed. Nevertheless, it does provide a basic overview of financials. It gives you a little of the terminology that we use in describing the various financials. A governmental financial statement is a lot different than a business. The terms are different, the descriptions, and even the financial names are different. Jackson knows what I'm talking about. He deals with it from the state side. It's a different animal than what we get into with private businesses. The M-DNA gives you basically an overview of that. It describes those type of things. It also has some highlighted numbers, you know, total assets, total liabilities. But the main numbers, it's got that reflected in here. If you want to... If you're going to read the whole report, at least read the M-DNA. It gives you a very good overview of everything. Okay? Starting on page 13, I believe, this starts our financial statements. Obviously, the city of Fayette, we've talked about it all year long. We've had a very good year. We obviously had a very significant financial transaction occur this year. That was a thorough bond issue. 2012 series of general obligation bond issue. It was a $3.5 million issue for our water park and our wastewater facility. The city of Fayette got their very first bond rating this year. An A+, which I couldn't have been more happier with that. Considering where we were in 2008, to go through a bond rating and get an A+, that was... I was hoping to get an A. I told Don before the following call came in on the credit rating, I felt like it was going to be a B+. Our investment bankers were anticipating an A. But when they got our reports, went through the interviews for everybody, for the size of the city, the size of Fayette, to get an A+ credit rating, I thought was... Even our investment bankers said that was better than what they had thought. If we're counting our size, it was a great paddle in back for our farm town. But obviously, having a bond issue, that magnitude has changed up some of our financial statements. I'm going to show you that very briefly, too. But overall, we had a good year. 2011, I think we talked about this last year, was probably one of the strongest years financially the city of Fayette's ever had. We had close to a million dollar profit in 2011. This year was still a great year, as good as 2011. But it's still a very good year financially. We ended up the year with about $6.1 million in the bank. Now, I guess that includes our bond link. Okay, everybody's looking at the $6 million. Remember, we did the $3.5 million bond issue. That money is still sitting in the bank. Okay, we obviously have not started construction or anything yet. So, if you take that bond issue out and look at just our other money in the banks, we're about $566,000 ahead of where we were last year. So, this year, we've added $566,000 to our checking account balances and CDs and everything we have. In addition, we've paid about $530,000 worth of note payments this year. So, cash went up 566, and our debt payments went down 530. Yes, we did add a $350,000 note for the street payment project, but we didn't make $530,000 in note payments for the year. If you look over the next page, page 14, again, I'm not going to get into all these numbers too much here. But I want to point out a few things today because a couple of these things can jump out at you. Page 14 is a profit-loss schedule. It's a very confusing report. It's not like you typically look at a profit-loss schedule. The third line from the bottom, change in net assets. That's the city's profits. Okay, you see four columns there. The first column, $1,031,000. That is our profit in all of our funds except for wastewater. This includes all of our tax revenues, garbage, business license, every revenue except for wastewater. Okay? The next column there, you see a negative $339,000. That is the loss in the wastewater. Okay, now, everybody jerk their head up on that. Before we get terribly concerned about that, I'm going to show you another number in a minute. An area of concern that that's explanatory. Okay, how we do our wastewater system? I mean, I think we've talked about this before. We have a check that comes in once a month from the water board for collecting our sewer fees. That check comes in, we deposit it into a CD. We keep it in a CD, earn interest. I forget what the rate is. It's one of the highest rates we have. It's sister and earns interest. Don pays all of the bills out of our general operating account. Okay, even the wastewater bills. The money comes in to sewer, into our sewer CD, pays bills out of the general fund. As we need it, she'll transfer money. Okay? She'll transfer money from the CD to cover the wastewater bills that the general fund pays for. Don't jump in on this while we're leaving this out. It's kind of confusing. Okay? So, what happens periodically, she'll transfer money. It's not monthly, it's not quarterly. Just whenever the general fund needs money, she'll transfer it out. The goal here is keep as much as we can earning interest for as long as we can. And you notice the interest was up about $15,000 issued for what it was last year by utilizing this process. And then, we transfer money. Okay, in 2012, we had two transfers. Number one, I think in October of 2011, Don transferred money to cover the September embanked bills for last year. So, that's in here. In addition, our bond issue, if you remember the $3.5 million bond issue, included a note at Citizens Bank that we refinanced. Okay, and I'm going to show you this in a second, too. And this is getting confusing, but the bond issue was on the wastewater side. It's for the water park and the sewer system. Okay, we have a note over here on the general fund side. It's Citizens Bank that we paid off. That's called a transfer. So, that's reflected in here. Okay, the wastewater didn't really lose $339,000. A lot of this is transfers. Okay, I'm going to show you that in just a second. Okay? So, when you look at that number, don't let it jump out at you too much, okay? But if you will flip on over, this is a very significant change. I do want to bring up the... And how this thing looks compared to last year. I'm going to get into the sewer system in just a minute. Well, that's where we're going now. If you look over on page 20, this is called proprietary funds. Because that's our wastewater system. Okay? In addition, a water park is also considered a proprietary fund. What proprietary funds are? It's funds of the city that are conducted like a normal, like a regular business. We charge somebody a fee for a service. It's supposed to cover itself. Our wastewater is supposed to cover itself. That mean it does, it's supposed to. Okay, a pool or a water park is also from our end, from accounting end, is considered a proprietary fund, just like wastewater fund. Okay? So, this year, you see, now we have two columns on this statement. Y'all with me still? I'm trying to make this short, but I want to explain all this because it's confusing. You see, we have two columns. Obviously, next year, and this year, we didn't have a whole lot in the water parks. It's not constructed. We did have some bond calls that we had amortized. But next year, we'll have... This will be a full P and L beside the wastewater on the same statement. Okay, because it's considered a proprietary fund. Those all go together. Y'all with me on that? If you look over, again, on page 20, remember I was telling you a few minutes ago, we had a $339,000 loss in wastewater? Actually, from our operations of our water system, from the wastewater system, we had a $71,000 loss from operations. Okay, kind of in the middle of the page, there income loss from operations, $71,000. That's still high. It's not $339,000, but it's still high. Okay, two reasons it was high, we had such a loss this year. One, we knew about going in, one we didn't know about. First of all, we had a lot of repairs this year. And we've talked about it all year. In fact, that's a lot of our bond money is going to, I believe, to fix things, to somewhat eliminate or limit or reduce the likelihood of repairs in the future. We had a little over $100,000 in repairs for our sewer system this year.
You're saying that means the sewer treatment plant, not land?
Right, right.
That's the pumps, mainly.
Right, exactly. In fact, that's what went out, I think. We had some actual pumps.
Pumps, major, major pumps.
Last year, 2011, we had $50,000. We doubled our repairs in one year. Okay? We kind of knew about that. That was been talked about all year long. That was one foundation for our bond issue for the treatment plant. Do something to fix that problem. Okay? Nevertheless, we still had a big hit for this year. In addition, our sewer revenues were down this year. And Don, there's not a whole lot we do about that. Water board bills, that collects it based on water consumption. Waters down, which it was. Sewer revenues were down. Sewer revenues were down about $15,000 from last year. And I don't think there's anything we can do about that. Just, that's the way it is.
Ricky's got indicative of less meters on the system than there was...
No, we didn't really have any less customers this year. I checked on that. Had a few, but not many.
We had a rainy summer, didn't water the yards.
Total water revenues were down. So, therefore, our revenues were down. And we did, you know, we do reserve for bad debts and things like that. So, for this particular issue, that was not really a big problem. But nevertheless, we still had, you know, a significant difference from last year. Last year, we had about $12,000 of profit from operations. Forget the transfers from operations. So, I told Don, this one is, we take a close look at our sewer this year to make sure. Hopefully, we corrected the repairs. Hopefully, we will have that going forward. And of course, we correct that, that will hopefully correct this issue. Okay, so, I want to point this out to y'all that if you look at the financial, you're going to see a big loss on the bottom line. But look above the bottom line and really look at the operations of the wastewater fund. See that we didn't really lose as much as reflected on the financial statement. Okay? I was trying to confuse there about it, might have made it worse by trying to explain all this. The rest of the stuff is the standard. We've got some pretty good detail about our bond issue. Now, one thing you're going to read in here, remember, we had a bond issue for two different projects. The treatment plant and the water park. Okay, we allocated in our report how much is for the water park, how much is for the wastewater. 1.2 for wastewater, 2.3 for the water park. Okay, and those are rounded numbers. We had bond costs coming out of that, but 1.2 and 2.3. That is obviously contingent upon the actual cost that we actually get into. We estimated that for this year. When you actually get into the construction cost, we can change these numbers up as we need to. But if you see a reference in the report, how we allocated out the funds to the various projects, that was based on estimates on what we originally had discussed. Okay? That can be changed. The only other thing I really want to bring up, just in case you got a question about it, is on our management letter, I think I saw several of you looking at this earlier, on the last page of the management letter, we did have a... And Don chiming in on this, too. We did notice this year that our past due accounts, our garbage billing was up a lot. It was up about 60%. And when we first looked into it, we thought, okay, what's going on? Now, if I can buy some, people quit paying the bills. As y'all well know, periodically during the year, we'll send out warrant letters, collection letters. Basically, don't pay your bill, there's more of your risk, or something like that. Okay? Obviously, when people get that bill, they come pay. As of the year end, September 30th, we didn't send those warrant letters out until October. So, as of September 30th, we had a huge past due balance, a lot higher than we've ever had before. And we had a meeting, Don, and Beth, and Dory, and I met, to try to find out what was the problem, realized just the warrant letters had not been sent out. So, this recommendation is make sure that we send these warrant letters out every quarter. I think at least every quarter is what we talked about. Dory had done this for years, and she said, usually, when you send the warrant letters out, people come in. So, that's what this point was, say, hey, send out warrant letters on a consistent basis every three months. Let's monitor that a little more closely and make sure that we don't have any significant past dues.
Just out of curiosity, what's the number behind 60%? How many households were there?
540. 544. And it was $19,000. Again, it was a significant amount. Soon as the warrant letters went out, boom, people came and paid. It's just a time and difference. Of course, unfortunately, it hit at the end of the year. We done the warrant letters in September. People might have come in and paid before the end of the year. It's hit at the last, you know, end of the year. But it's one thing we talked about in our meeting, just to make sure we're consistent. Every three months, we send these warrant letters out to make sure we keep our past dues down to... And the past dues, that's considered anybody 30 days out. So, we're not talking to you, you know, people months and months. This is considered anything over 30 days past due.
Rick, I'm glad, Dory has since moved to the court magistrate. That will no longer be her responsibility, correct?
Right, we brought her in on that meeting.
And she's been learning a lot, you know, since the transition here. She's had a lot of learning. And she understands now. She's been trained in that, but she had so much other training, so I don't want to...
We've asked her to assume a whole lot in less than a year. She's...
Yeah, this was, I mean, she did them. It's just, it was a time and difference. And, you know, she's dumb. I mean, she did what she was supposed to do. It's just a time difference when it was done. We brought Dory in on the need and just some reason, she has done it for a number of years. And she was more familiar with the software than anybody else. When we first got into it, Councilman, I was concerned it might be a mechanical problem, how we were setting up our billing, how we were running billing, how we were collecting money. But when we got into it, realized it was something as simple as, you know, collection efforts. But anyway, I'm trying to do that, Councilman. I didn't make it to 10 minutes, did I? I'm sorry. I tried to do that quick. That is a quick overview. Again, I tried to make this as short as I could, tried to make it as less confusing as I could. But please take a look at your report and call me if you have any questions. I'll be glad to try to address any questions. Got any questions now? Yes, sir.
Oh, know what you will cause significant findings.
Knows... We haven't really had any significant findings here. The good thing about it, Councilman, if problems come up during the year, they're usually addressed, usually. In a town like Fayette, yes, we have internal control weaknesses. And we were dressed or brought that up to some degree in the management report. Internal controls for a small town or a small organization, whether that's DHR or City of Fayette, small organizations, it's hard to have a good system of internal controls. We try to do the best we can. It's a cost-benefit relationship. Yes, it'd be great if we had three other people in the office that we could, you know, have reconciled banks and make accounts and all that kind of stuff. It's not really feasible.
But you saw where I was going.
Yes.
Not reconciling bank statements for several months in a row.
Yes.
Not even anything that warrants being in here.
They were reconciled as of the end of year.
Okay.
Yes, September 30th, all the bank statements... Yes, September thirtieth, all the bank accounts were reconciled to the penny. Even the bond accounts were reconciled. We did have one issue, I guess my name is incorrect, I forget, we had one issue where, I think Don called up some bank statements, and when we got them, they were all reconciled.
It's not good accounting practices, to go for several months not reconciling banks.
I think that was addressed.
Is that, because I know when mine comes in, the state officers come in, I get the bank statement, and look at it first, initially, then hand it to the finance person who reconciles it, and has had it back within a certain timeframe to be-
Mary, do they come through first, or they go straight to the city clerk?
There's so many different accounts, now that they go directly to the clerk.
One thing we try to do a lot of times, is we try to have, I think Councilman already brought it up, how the bank statement should go to somebody other than the finance person at the first source. One of the problems, in fact, I've talked to Don about this, we have, goodness gracious, forty accounts, I forget how many, we have a ton of accounts. One thing I've talked to Don about is getting us a list of maybe all of these accounts that we no longer use. We've got a ton of accounts with less than a hundred dollars on them. Various bond accounts for grant funds that we've had over the years, there may be twenty bucks, or fifty bucks, or whatever. Nevertheless, it's a bank statement that comes in, a bank account has to be reconciled every month. Do away with a lot of those. I think that would help tremendously.
I did some of that, when I first got to Fayette, we had several, sort of, down there.
Yeah, I forget how many we found, there's a ton of them.
The historical precedent here, when you have your audit, in terms of the suggestions going about. For example, developing, is a recommendation to develop accounting policies and procedures manual? Like when you get these, not finding, but discussion points?
That's what's been brought up.
You guys have done administratively here, or is it something that councils collectively? Put some dates on to-
No, we've expected the auditor and the clerk to take care of these issues, and maybe we need to do a better job of making sure that all these recommendations are followed up.
Was this on the letter last year?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
The accounting policy, one, really propped up this year, we had a new employee comes in, that's when it really makes a difference. That's one thing, we've talked about for several years, we never have really done anything on it, but it'd be good to have also.
Rick, just for Councilman Cowell's bit, and I guess for mine too, you are employed as our auditor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But you are hands-on on a regular basis all through the year, would keep him on track?
Sure. You have to, it's a fine line. You can't cross that line. Like, for example, we can make journal entries with the computer, under Don's supervision. For example, I give Don audit entries to make every year. I have, I don't know, say thirty journal entries. For my journal entries, audit justice, Don will make them. At the same time, I can come in during the year and make journal entries in Don's computer under her supervision. I can't go in there and start changing up the financial statements.
Right.
But you can do things like that under her supervision.
So it's totally within the normal realm of your job to be helping keep her on track?
You can't act really as management. That's what you get into. You can provide guidance, counsel, make recommendations. You can do things like that, but you can't really act as management, so.
Thanks, clerk.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Rick, you've done a very good job presenting the report here at the audit. Counsel, are you ready to approve the audit tonight, or you need some more time to look at it?
I'd like a meeting at least, to flip read the big book, or out the book on this.
Okay. All right, then we will plan to approve the audit at our next meeting. Rick, you did a very good job on it. Is that the wishes of the council? I guess, this is. Normally, we approve that.
Look at all those numbers you had.
And you did not get that prior to this meeting, so I can understand why you need more time to review it. Okay, on our agenda, aquatic park report, Council, we have an aquatic park citizens' committee. I asked Ann Hammer to serve as the chairman of that committee, and I would like for her to come forward now. And I think she has the committee here, and I'd like for her to introduce citizens that are helping with that, if she would, and then give us a report, and we're gonna go into detail in our work session on the park. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would like to introduce the members of my committee, and bring you up to date on what we've been doing. But first of all, before I introduce them, I would like to say that each person on this committee brings a certain knowledge and expertise to this committee that is most important, whether it is a background in pool management, resources, different programs that we're planning to offer at the pools, such as water aerobics, swim lessons, things like that. So everyone, or whether it is going out into the community and making a positive statement about what we're planning to do with the pool. So with that being said, I would like to say, first of all, Council, Lady McCall is on our committee, she represents the park. Our park director, Nancy is on the committee. We have Ms. Debbie Garcia, who is a member of our committee. Mrs. McCall is a member of our committee. Mr. Williams, Eddie Williams, Tammy McCollum, and two of our members are not here, Gina Robertson and Nancy Bagley. Each of these have had experience, they have extensive knowledge about pools, operation of pools, and things like that. Plus, those that don't have the pool knowledge have, are bringing a positive impact to their community about what we're trying to do. So just to bring you up to date on what we've been doing, we were given the task of, first of all, coming up with a job description. We have had three meetings, and I will say that each one of them have been rather lengthy. Ashley discussed all of the things that we think should be included in a job description for this very important facility that we're going to be building at our park. And I have run copies for each of you, and these are not locked in stone. So if you see something on there that you think needs to be changed or added, please feel free to give me a call or someone on the committee. We do plan to post this job, we would like to have someone in place by the first of February, so we have about six weeks in order to get that person hired. And we have discussed different ways about how we're gonna go about doing that. One of those being to go through the career center at Beville, and having Sharon to post it through her network that she has at the college. And that she can do the initial screening. If we have several applicants, then based on her recommendations, then we would do the final interview and in selection of that person. This is going to be a nine-month job, it does not include benefits. Since it is a part-time job, it's going to be a lot of hours involved. There are certain certifications that have to be obtained by the director of the pool, and then in turn, that person will have to select and train lifeguards. We have to have about fourteen to fifteen lifeguards. I have been in touch with the Red Cross in Birmingham, they have a chapter there, they will come, they're coming in January to meet with us, and go over a lot of the rules and regulations that the Red Cross requires on aquatic facilities such as ours. And Matthew, the young man that I've talked with at the Red Cross, he would like to see our facility set up as a training facility for other areas. And so it'd be a discount when we agreed to do that. So he thinks that we will be a good candidate for that, so that's a positive for us. But I, y'all didn't introduce my members to know. Getting off track. But, so we're looking forward to him being here in January. If any of you would like to come to any of our meetings, we won't make it in until January, but when the Red Cross comes, if you'd like to come and be a part of that, learn all of the rules and regulations that are required by the Red Cross, we certainly are planning for this pool to be under the directions of the safety rules and regulations that the Red Cross puts out, so that's an important part of that as well. We have gone through with designs, I'm gonna let Kurt talk about the designs, we've had to make some choices today about colors and different things that are gonna be at the park. So we have had, as I said, we've had three meetings, each one, we've made some very important decisions. We've decided on the job description, we've decided on the fees, the rates that we want to charge, we have decided on the hours of operation, and so with those things being in place, waiting for your approval, then we're ready to move forward and take the next step, and that is to hire a director for our aquatic park. So, does anyone have a question for me? I'm gonna let Kurt come and talk about some things that he wants to talk about, and then maybe we'll address questions in the work session.
Yeah, but that's where we're gonna do most of our planning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hammer, thank you for your leadership. I know they had a three-hour meeting, three hours. This is how dedicated they are in the morning. And let me say again, clarify, this is an advisory board, they're just advising us, Council, you see anything in this job description that we need to change or add to, and we'll, the city will set the salary, the city council will set the salary of this employee, the aquatic director, and the pool fees and operations, hours of operation, all of that, they've made recommendations here, and we will study that, look at it, and then we'll make some decisions on that as a council, so. Do you have any comments? We're gonna get into more detail in the work session, specific details, but I want you to go ahead and have that, have that handout on the job description. Okay, that's a very good report. Thank you, thank you again for participating and being a part of this. We've got some good plans, we're working on some good plans for our aquatic park. I'm gonna ask Kurt Hankins, our lead engineer from Goodwin, Tewitt, and Mills to come forward and give us an update. We had a special call council meeting, we had our third component, our third bid on the construction and the, what was the, what was the name of that building?
The restroom in Hard State.
Hard State, okay. Would you give us a report, please?
We did take bids on November the twenty-ninth, two o'clock, on the restroom building in Hard State, revised plan is a little smaller. The low bidder for that project was diamat construction of Hamilton Alballon. Their bid was six hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen, which was lower than we hoped it would be, so that was great. The council did have that special call meeting on the fourth of December, and voted to award that. We're looking forward with them. Also, we had a meeting last Thursday, myself and the city engineer, Dwayne Robie, and all of the contractors involved in the project, and we worked on some timelines and some coordination schedules and that sort of thing. We will be end of this week or first of next, we'll be doing some stakeout work up there, and I'll start doing a little bit of work before Christmas, but then, in earnest, January second, Cox Tools is coming with one or two crews, and Diamond actually started with his crew, and there'll be lots of things happening in there. But, and then there are some choices that we need to look at on colors in regards to the slides, they can move forward with that manufacturing of those, and we'll, we can talk about those during the work session.
Could you give us a report, you met with Greg Guinness, the manager of the tile plant?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have some savings if we use, can you give us a report on that?
Yes, sir, I did meet with Greg down at Tile Plant. Dial Tile used to make coping, the tile coping that goes around the edge of the pool, which will be, we weren't gonna regularly be using, because we're gonna have the stainless steel gutter. In the move to the skimmer system, we now have that coping. And I was talking with Greg and mentioning that to him, and he said, I have some of that. So I went and met with him, and Dial Tile no longer makes it, but when Dial Tile stopped making it, Greg requested that all the leftover from all the plants around the country be sent here to the Fayette plant. So that was very fortuitous. So he has four colors that we have to choose from, and plenty, and I've given him the numbers, he has plenty to cover what we need, and is willing to donate that to the city for our use, so we'll have a few savings, a little bit of savings there in materials with that pool contractor, so.
Greg will be here for the work session, he'll be in about six o'clock. And he, we do have the samples for us to review, look at, that's good. So he plans to be here.
That'd be great.
I wonder, there's one thing I forgot to mention, and that is, our committee would like to recommend that we have a ground breaking and ribbon tiding at the side when all of the equipment gets there. I think this is an important enough event that that is in order to do that, so we would like to recommend that we do that probably in January.
All right, Don. We'll get more detail in our work session, is that all you'd like to report? The good thing is, is that the bid came in, what-
Yes, sir, the bid came in under-
It is, and we do have some things to look at during the work sessions, determine if we want to do some extra things. Now Lance Holloman, park director, has been a vital part of this planning process. Lance, do you have anything right now you'd like to share with the council?
I just, I'd just like to thank the community board that we have, the work that we've been asking of the council in those three meetings. Everybody has been very productive, very professional, and been able to accomplish a lot.
Very good. All right, thank you for that report. I'd like to announce item five, the Community Foundation Grant Awards. I served on that board, Mr. Lawrence serves on that board, and each year, in the month of November, we take applications. We had ninety-two applications, and of the ninety-two applications, we had eight hundred thousand dollars worth requests, grant requests, and I wanted to report to you that the board awarded around four hundred and, was it four hundred and sixty, Dale?
Yes, sir.
Some, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in monies going back into our community, to Fayette County. And I have to report to you tonight that we had, the city of Fayette, the grant applications that we filled out, we received around thirty thousand dollars. Now, that's about four different grants. And I would like to, our community center, there was a ten thousand dollar grant to make improvements at our community center, so we were awarded that grant. Ten thousand dollars, and Ms. Hammer actually did the application on this, ten thousand dollars to go to our water park. So we rewarded an additional ten thousand dollars to go to our water park from that, from the Tilliston Foundation, it's the Fayette Community Foundation now. And we have an endowment of over ten million dollars that generates the, off the interest that we're able to put back into the community one time a year. And these awards were announced in the month of December, we received our letters, and we also have a Fayette Sixty River Master Plan Phase Two, that was a seventy-five hundred dollar grant. I do want to announce that we also had a Fayette website development grant that I applied for, that was thirty-three hundred and fifty dollars to get us started, upstarted on a new website, the city of Fayette. And then the police department had applied for a paperless reporting system for the patrol cars. That was partially granted, two of the cars was partially granted, and I know that Chief Ellis had a, had a, had an application in too, and I'm sorry to say that we didn't get any grant money for that application, and, but let's keep applying. We, and I think yours was for some rehab equipment. So we tried to apply for grants that would help put money back into the city and improve infrastructure, and a lot of good things, and I'm really excited about the Fayette Community Foundation grants that we have. I would like to recognize John James, he's the chairman of our Economic Development Advisory Board, and John is- Board, and John is, we've got eight different projects that we're working with right now, active projects, viable projects, that we feel like that we'll just stay, hang in here and keep working at it, and that some good things will come out of that. And I will announce that we were able to meet John James, Ron Davis, David Thornell, myself, and Joe Joelswalt, met with the dean of the business college, I believe it was the week before last, Dean Mike Harden. Dean Mike Harden, we met with Dean Harden, no relation, Dr. Harden, no relation. I'm assuming.
University of Alabama Business College?
Yes, sir.
Well then, he's got my son as one of his employees.
Right, right, right. But he was, we had an encouraging meeting with Dean Harden. He's excited. We showed him the five-minute Today in America tape, the broadcast, the national broadcast of our community, and we talked about these eight different projects that we're working on. So I'm very excited about that meeting that we had with Dean Harden. Item number seven, quarterly employee safety meeting. This is the time of the year, the month of December, that we have our quarterly employee safety meeting, and I don't know if that's gonna be scheduled next week, either Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. Was there ever a decision made?
Friday.
Friday.
The 21st.
The 21st. City council, we invite you, what we do, we have a Christmas meal with our employees at the civic center. And the date on that is Friday, December the 21st.
The 21st.
December the 21st. We will have our safety meeting and also have that Christmas meal with our employees.
What time?
What time?
12:00.
12:00.
That's gonna be late lunch for those guys.
Might need to adjust that to 11:00. We'll, we'll look at that. I don't know. Is 12:00 a magic number?
It's just always been 12:00.
Has it always been 12:00? Okay, well, it's always been 12:00. It's only a change. Okay, I just wanted to announce that airport report, item seven, I had some things that I wanted to bring to your attention. We've gone through a transition at the airport. October the 1st, we terminated our contract with Tommy Dix. We've been going through a lot of transition at the airport. We've had to buy, we've had to buy fuel, two different kinds of fuel, jet fuel and then our regular fuel up there, and that is really, when you have that much fuel, 10,000 gallons sitting in your tank, you know, you don't see a return on that until it's, until you sell it down. And we've gone through some transition there, some extra costs, and Air Evac is, I think, we're waiting on a $10,000 check from Air Evac. I have placed Don Kimble, who has been our acting engineer, up there at this time, just to fill in up there until we make this transition, and then council will need to sit down and decide what direction you want to go on continuing to, what, if we're gonna have a part-time airport director, then we need to have a contract with that person and have an amount, just very similar to what we did with him as an engineer. Now I've had some council ask me, council member asked me to look at some individuals that could fill that position, and so I wanna have a discussion about that and see what. Don Kimble does a very good job for us. He was up there taking water samples today. Periodically, we have to take water samples that go into the state. They analyze that, make sure storm drainage, water samples. So just wanted to share, do you have anything else that needs to be mentioned about the airport?
No.
Okay.
I have a comment on hiring the employee. Mr. Kimble does a good job, but I think when we decide what we want, we ought to throw that open for all qualified applicants and consider anybody that might want to come and do that for us.
Okay, I totally agree with that.
Mr. Kimble may very well be the best one out there, but we need to throw that open.
Well, he does have some experience.
Yes, he does.
He's on the plane, and he's really familiar with a lot of that, so.
He might be the best one, but we need to make sure.
And then there's been a question about an adjustment in pay also for that position, part-time position up there. We'll have some discussions about that before we do, before we make any decisions, and I need your help with that, council. Okay, let's get into approval of financial statement. You have the check registered, council, we need you to approve the check registered. Yeah, buddy.
All right, I have a motion. I listed it earlier when we got here.
We've got a motion, there are second to the motions. Second, or is there any discussion? This is the check registered that you're approving tonight. I think the total expenditures was $390,000, $390,000 for the month of, now that's for the month of November.
November, yes.
November, November. Any discussion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, have a second? Do we have any more discussion? If we have a motion, we adopt our financial, our check register. All those in favor of that say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Old business, I would like to report that American Power Source, our garment plant that does military contracting, has laid off 25 employees. We had Kathy Griffins come and share an updated report at our last meeting, and they have, and I asked her, I was told that one of their employees had worked there 11 years, and I asked her how they made their decision about who they would lay off, and she told me it was not based on experience, it was based on performance, based on performance. So she has told me that they were trying to schedule a trip to Washington DC next week. I asked her to send me all the information, but I have not received any information from the operations manager. So we still, the congressman from Michigan had about a 200-page report, or a piece of legislation that would change some of these laws, and Congressman Adarho just condensed that down into a six-page piece of legislation that he's wanting, but now that's in the future, that's not an immediate thing that can happen. And council, if you have any insight into this situation, we're working as hard as we can work to try to approve that. My heart goes out to those 25 ladies, the majority of them are ladies that were, that are unemployed, and so we wanna do everything we can. Kathy tells me they're still looking at some other contracts, non-military contracts, so we'll just wait and see how that goes along. Let's get into our reports. Any other old business?
I was gonna ask you, how did, because I didn't get to come down to the special meeting, what the internet meeting you guys had.
Right, I was, in the work session, I was gonna give you an update on that. The internet, you mean internet?
The website.
The website.
Sorry.
The website. We received a proposal today from Joe Watts, the gentleman that met with our, with their Economic Development Advisory Board. John, did you receive that proposal?
I have not seen it.
Okay, well, I'll forward it on to you. But Rod Norland is the chairman of that committee, and we're reviewing that, but we do plan to make some decisions with the recommendation of our board, our advisory board to the council, and get a new website. And I wanna say Van Graeley has put a website together that I'm so excited about. Every time he adds something to it, it just gets me more excited about the amount of information that can go out to our citizens from that one website. So as well as, will we archive our council meetings and put them on our new website?
That's true.
Okay, so that's another way that we can communicate with our citizens. Is there any other old business? All right, let's get into our reports. Mr. Clapp, do you have a report?
Yes, sir, I just want to give our net amount that we collected for sales tax for November was $184,300. Alcohol tax, and this is the net, this is what we actually deposited. Alcohol tax, $12,700.
$12,700. That should jump out at you, council, because you've been averaging around nine, between nine and 10. And our alcohol tax, $12,700, that's been our biggest month for revenue for alcohol tax.
One of our expenses.
Okay.
Maybe celebrating the Alabama already.
That was back here in Halloween.
Is this, is this the month of November or October?
It's what we collected in November, but it was October.
Oh, it's October, I'm sorry.
We're a step one month behind, so I'm looking for a big month this month. And then in January, a big month for December. All right.
And we budgeted $180 on the sales tax.
Yes, sir.
And we had $184.
$184, that's correct. All right, council lady, LeBron?
I don't have anything. I knew the park director would be here if he needs to say anything about the basketball program or anything.
Just ready to start practice next week. We do have four teams here, this is the Fayette Community, four, three, and six grad, and we have four teams, eighth, second, and third.
All right, and our park director and I had a discussion about a basketball program. I'm excited to be getting it kicked off here in the next week to two weeks, so. All right, anything else?
That's all, sir.
Okay, Councilman Harden?
Yes, sir, I have two or three, but I'll try to agree. A leaf truck is still, the motor on the leaf machine is still being rebuilt as of today, and we've had a lot of complications, and our, the mayor, Dwayne Roby, our engineers, Jeff, and our mechanic, William Brand, they've all been collaborating with parts dealers and the equipment dealers, trying to get us the correct parts to rebuild this engine. People have just hanging there with us a little long. I think longer to go is the end of this week.
I hope they'll have it. I was down there today, and they've got most of all of the motor put back together, and they're ready tomorrow morning to start assembling it.
Maybe by Thursday, hopefully, we can have our leaf trucks running. And again, I know people are frustrated because the leaves are piling up, and again, our city crew has been trying to do it manually with shovels and a dump truck, but hopefully the machines.
I have a plan, Councilman Harden, I'd like for us to, if we get it up and running this week, I'd like our crew that handles that to work on Saturday to get called up, help get called up. And I have a plan, and I'll present that to you in the work session.
That sounds good, man.
So that we can try to get caught back up on that.
Okay, moving on. Point B, the dog contractor, dog catcher, animal control contractor that we have, is that a one-year contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have had several citizens concerned about the services that we're getting for our money, and also, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but I've had more than one police officer in the last two weeks complaining to me about never being able to get a response from them, and I am aware that the county situation is changing, and I think they're going in the process of contracting with the Kimbles veterinary place here, and that they're building the facilities and really getting the equipment to do a first-class job for the county. And the next time our contract comes open, I think we ought to, we ought to talk to the Kimbles if we have an opportunity to get the, to keep the business local, and they give good service, I think we really need to take a look at that. And that's just a comment. Third thing, two weeks ago, we had a, we had a motion to help our high school football team with their traveling expenses, and I think that was a worthy motion, and we approved it. Since then, I have been contacted by David Harrison, the director of the Fayette High School Band Foundation, who's responsible for all their finances of getting them money to do anything that, you know, the school can't give any money to the band program. Basically, it's all done through volunteers. The band traveled on charter buses to the last two ballgames, the long-distance ballgames that Fayette took. I forget where that place is, they went to semifinals, and then went to Auburn for the mound. The band spent over $11,000 on the charter buses for the two trips, and he was asking me if we would consider making a small donation to the band foundation to help offset the money they just spent, and I would like to see the council consider, and I would support a donation of $500, likewise, to our band foundation to help the travel expense just incurred.
Councilman Harden had discussed this with me yesterday, the day before, I believe, and I was in agreement with this. He asked me to put it on the agenda, and he's bringing it to your attention, council, tonight at our meeting, and I'm gonna open the floor for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You would need to give it to Fayette County High School.
Fayette County High School.
For the motion, you're making the motion that we give $500 Fayette County High School band program.
But fund it through the high school, before the use of the band program to help offset their recently incurred travel.
We've got that motion. Are we having a second? Or is there any discussion?
All right, we have to, I think we have to make that check to the Board of Education. That's what we had to do with the football program.
Board of Education.
We'll let Neil research it.
Wow.
That's, that's the Fayette Board of Education.
That's what we did the last week.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of granting that $500 to the Fayette County High School band, the check will go to the Fayette County Board of Education. All those in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Now, I'd like to counsel.
I'm assuming, being new, when the budget that was passed, looking at that, we'll have $5,000 appropriated for the elementary middle and high. That means when the checks go out, that comes out of the appropriation.
In the past, we just made, we just.
So they'll get $4,000.
We haven't done that in the past when we made those awards. We've just taken it out of our phone. It's up to whatever the council wants to do.
Going outside appropriation?
That's what we've done in the past. Now, we can discuss that, and whatever the council thinks, that $5,000 that goes to the schools, goes to the principals for them to use in whatever areas, and I can tell you some of the areas that they.
I don't know, I guess being naive, I was just assuming to come out the appropriated
Well, we voted two weeks ago, I guess it was the last meeting, the football team. I thought it was going to be the same thing too, but maybe I was mistaken. That it would come out of that $5,000. I may be wrong.
Well, now, that's up to the council. That's what the council wants. Look at it that way. You just need to let me know.
I think before we give the donations, we probably need to hash this out.
All right, we will. Okay. You have anything else?
No, sir, I saw. Thank you, thank you, thank you, council.
Councilman Cal.
Oh, you're me, man. I sent a message to Brother Brown, I hadn't heard back from him, anything on sanitation department. Outside of that, I don't have anything to discuss right now.
Okay, when you talk with him again, we have a capital improvement on the, a new leaf truck. We have it in our budget, and he and, I had him, this engineer, do some searching last week when they were here, and I think we found that, so we need to get you with him, get you updated on where we are.
I just, and I would say to appreciate Mike, and you coming to my aid, I understand, I was kidding, I had a gentleman call me the other day, said he was kidding around, I got blamed with the leaf redistribution.
On the radio. But I understand you guys got that cleared up.
We got it. The mayor, the mayor got into it first, but so.
They let me talk about it the next morning, make sure everybody understood it, it wasn't your fault.
He was kidding around.
Anything else? That's all.
Mayor Probst, no more than asks, are we gonna meet, outside of me?
That's a good question. I don't wanna meet on Christmas Day.
I just go ahead and cancel that meeting.
Do we have anything to reschedule? Is there anything gonna be urgent?
If something urgent comes up, I would contact you and have a special meeting, a reschedule of the regular meeting.
Another day. I'm not gonna be down here on Christmas night.
Hey, one part I was paying attention during that leaf municipalities meeting, they did say we do have to have, regardless of the holiday, we do have to have two meetings a month.
Well, we've been violating the law.
Oh, okay.
I'm not suggesting, I didn't pass. I'm not suggesting we can't meet. Well, no, I wouldn't suggest a meeting on Christmas, but.
You had a meeting. We're covered, aren't we? But now, there has been times that that day, that there's a current conflict that we just took, and my question is, do we wanna meet if we don't have anything to meet of in regards to, and I know there's plenty.
Now, that two meetings a month, you paid more attention than I did four years ago. I didn't catch that. Is that a lot?
Yeah. For towns under 12,000 residents? No, 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 for cities over 5,000 or 6,000 residents. No, under twenty.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. Because, for example, towns, towns are only required to meet once a month. Cities have to meet twice.
I didn't know the requirement. I didn't know that you couldn't cancel a meeting if you wanted to.
I know. I depend on my city.
I understand.
But I do know in the past, we have. Right. For, for example, like, belt would be, no offense to belt, but usually, because of their population, they're only required to meet once a month. But.
Cities fifteen.
Under fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred or over is a city?
Yes, right.
And it's under fifteen.
Right. So if you're. Hey, Councilman Carr, I want you, I want you to know, that's the first time that that has been brought. I attend every one of these. That's the first time that it became, I became.
So I didn't miss it four years ago.
No, you didn't. I promise you, you didn't.
Hold up, I'm correct.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
That's all.
All right. You did cancel me for the twenty fifth.
Open that deal.
Okay. I'm glad you did, council. I don't think we have a forum. All right, any other business, come with the city council. We're gonna go right on into our work session. We'll take a five-minute recess and then have a work session. It's good to see Greg Ginnon come in. He's been a tremendous supporter of our city government. Thank you, Greg. And it's good to see Larry Pinkerton here. Larry is going to be our broker. We have just signed an agreement with Larry on our workman's compensation.
The AMIC.
The AMIC. We always have a broker that will review what AMIC proposes to the, to our city. And he, since he's here, and he's more readily available, our broker was out of Birmingham. And we had an opportunity to make that change. And Larry, I want to thank you that you're interested enough that you want to help us and look for some savings.
Absolutely.
Do you have a comment you'd like to make?
No, I just appreciate you guys and the loyalty of having a local agent who will take a look at it. And when the bill comes up, and hopefully, we can make some suggestions and do a good job of servicing. We just, like I said, appreciate your community service.
Okay. And Dale, that was an administrative decision to make that change. If you see that we should have voted on it, I don't think we'll have a problem getting, Larry voted in. Okay. Very good. Thank you for being here, Larry. I didn't plan to say that, even tonight if you weren't here. But it's, it's gonna be a good thing for the city. So.
Business logo, Larry.
Yes, sir. I have a motion for a German.
So moving.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of Germans, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, council.